Different than Dakota Prairie time, so we'll get started. Jason, sorry, I have things going. Okay. Um, all right, I think I have a quorum for the board meeting and everyone is logged in. Sorry, Jason, it's not working. Sorry, just have a little internet problem, everybody. I do. Yep. Okay, I think we're rolling. I'm looking for a motion of approval of the agenda.
Second.
By West and seconded by Terry. Ryan, we're ready for that vote?
Did you join the meeting?
Yeah, there you go. All right, motion passes. Deb, will you read the school district mission statement for us?
Yes. The Brookings School District prepares all learners to be confident, engaged citizens, empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world.
Thank you. Um, this is a time for board members to declare any conflict of interest items on the agenda. Dr. Willard, do we have any this evening?
We have none to present this evening.
Thank you. All right. This is a time for members of the audience to address the board concerning issues that are not on the agenda. Per the policy, the presentation should be as brief as possible unless an extension of time is granted, a speaker will be limited to five minutes. Yep, I have it. I just took it at 4:15, so if anyone else wanted to sign up. All right. Uh, Dr. Willard has signed up.
Well, I'm going to begin by saying this isn't quite how I expected to celebrate my 52nd birthday. But dear Madam President, school board members, members of the Brookings School District, it is with apprehension that I submit my resignation as the Brookings School District Superintendent of Schools position effective June 2, 2023. While this resignation is unconventional, it is what is deemed concurrent with the current school board members' goals for the district. Few roles in my 29 career in education or my 23 years as a school superintendent has brought me the joy and pride that serving as the superintendent of schools for the Brookings School District and the greater Bobcat Nation. This role has allowed me to utilize my servant attitude and philosophy to serve the district, ensuring our learners, staff, administrators, school board, and the greater Brookings community were all participating and benefiting from a district that was educationally focused on doing our best for the learners we were educating. During my tenure as superintendent of the Brookings School District, I've worked tirelessly with my team to create and build a better school district. These efforts began by implementing a district vision and mission with the support of the school board, administrative teams, school staff, and community. The vision became the focal point of everything we strive to accomplish within the district. The vision of preparing all learners to be confident, engaged citizens, empowered to impact the ever-changing and interconnected world has echoed through curriculum changes, educational innovations that have improved the learning experiences at all levels. We have seen this vision expand through all levels of performance, both in the classroom and throughout the experiences we have created over the last eight years, including from being the first district in South Dakota to create a registered apprenticeship program, becoming the first community in eastern South Dakota to be recognized as an early learning community, enhancing career and technical educational opportunities by receiving nearly $1 million in additional funding through competitive state workforce development grants, or developing enhanced opportunities for learners through extracurricular and co-curricular activities. My leadership and commitment to continuous improvement has been instrumental from day one, ushering the school district through numerous challenges of staffing transitions, navigating the great pandemic of COVID, keeping students educationally bound while not attending in-person school for which we receive national recognition, societal changes that have impacted student learning, navigating bomb threats, subverting increasing threats to student educational process, all of this through care and concern of coordinating and collaborating with staff, fellow administrators, local leaders, experts, law enforcement, state legislators, national influencers, and federal-level government officials. My commitment to this district as a whole has been to increase connectivity of my office and the district staff by implementing changes to district operations, making us more available to learners, parents, staff, administrators, and the community at large. Implementing a new district website platform, introducing the Monday Memo through YouTube to provide regular communications with the community, and also answering questions raised by concerned citizens, and being active and visible in the broader community, all are means that I truly am proud of during my tenure in the Brookings School District. My radio show provided another alternative for the community at large to connect and learn about the relevant district happenings. Another major accomplishment was that of creating the Brookings School District Foundation and engaging the community in additional opportunities to support the important and significant job we are doing, educating tomorrow's leaders. My hiring eight years ago resulted from my proven abilities to build a better district, not only educationally but also through our facilities. My extensive experience building exemplary educational facilities and leading through the challenges of construction have served the Brookings School District and taxpayers' interests in completing the Dakota Prairie Project and the Mickelson Middle School Edition. I believe my efforts were instrumental in promoting the bond as the district takes on its largest, significantly complicated, and most expensive project at Hillcrest and Madera Elementary Schools. The project reflects a $35 million endorsement by this community through a bond issue with nearly 70% approval on the first passage, that trust in the leadership and commitment to the educational opportunities in the greater Brookings community is very important. That significant importance of education of our learners is why I've committed myself, my family, and my life endeavor, my life to the endeavors of the Brookings School District. This job and the work I have done is more than a passion to me. It is essentially my life's work. I am very proud to have both of my children graduate from the Brookings School District and know that much of their concurrent current success comes from the very sound education they received from the district. As I announce my resignation, I want to thank current and former school board members, all of my colleagues, administrators, staff, learners, parents, and the greater Brookings community for your dedicated support of the vision and mission of the Brookings School District and me, as we all worked very hard together to make the district the very best it could be for our learners and for our community. It truly is a great day to be a Bobcat. Board members, I know my letter was not attached to the agenda. I do have copies available for you individually and for the public at large. I also have a statement regarding some of the information that may be circulating regarding our temporary probationary status regarding accreditation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Willard. Uh, Jason Bowes. Green light. Just press the button in the center for the green.
All right, can you hear me?
I can hear you now.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, here we are again. I guess I want to ask you, what is going on? What is going on here? You know, I, from all of you, I guess, you know, I want to thank you, Dr. Willard, for all the hard work you've put in, for, for the agricultural department that is just growing by leaps and bounds, and all the volunteer time that you've put into that department. You know, the, our family was involved in activities and the ag world, uh, and the community involvement that you embraced and encouraged, uh, just unbelievable. I, I mean, the, the progress that's been made in all facets there, and we see it in the fine arts world and all over, and the, the adversity that you've had to overcome and deal with, it's just tremendous. And, uh, we've had a lot of fun along the way with parades and huge, huge, uh, state tournament trips and lots of different sports and lots of different activities, lots of things, lots of success. Brookings is making progress by leaps and bounds, and that community engagement is, it's huge, and it was lacking, you know, over these last, you know, I could speak for myself of four or five years and, and, um, you know, it's just been amazing and it's been really fun to be a part of. And, and I just find it really hard to believe what's going on here. And now that, all that community involvement led to, you know, I don't know, I don't want to speak for everybody else, but I think a fair group in this room voted for this bond issue. This, you know, this is a $50 million bond issue. I, I just, to put that in perspective, two schools, two, construction on two schools at the same time. That's a huge monumental undertaking. It is historic. And there's a number of challenges that you will run into along the way. And who from the, who from the school is going to oversee that? There, there is, I mean, all of us property taxpayers are interested in what's going on here. And, you know, we need to know. I, I guess I have a real hard time, uh, thinking that you want to walk away from all that. I mean, the, the momentum is just continuing to build. And, and our kids, our kids had a tremendous education here, and we want to see everybody's kids have that same kind of opportunity. You know, there's challenges along the way, and there's different ways to tackle it, but, you know, we don't do it by taking action like this. And what I'd, what I'd say in closing is I would ask the board to not accept his resignation.
Thanks, Jason. Connie Harstead?
First time I've done that, done this. Happy birthday. I'm here, um, just because, number one, I was very surprised at her email letting us know what was going to be discussed tonight. I am employee of Brookings School District, and my husband is a big, you know, internet guy. I am not. He got on there and all the stuff he found out about Brookings School District, he asked me about, and I had no answer for him. That's why I wanted to talk tonight, because I found out we're on probation. I found out, oh, we might not get money after July. Now, I don't believe all that stuff that's out there, but there's always a thread of truth, and my husband wanted me to clarify things, and I couldn't. I had nothing. And that, that's my concern. I'm concerned about a lot of stuff, but that was really hard when you're an employee of the district, and we really tried to be transparent, and we really say that we are and have all these communication lines. And so, um, I appreciate you said you were going to, um, you had some, um, something attached to accreditation, and I will read that when I get a thing, a chance to. But I, I guess I was very concerned, and I think I'm not the only employee that is very concerned, that we felt very much in the dark, and we can't really help if we don't know what's going on. And I just say that very respectfully. I love Brookings School District. I think we've gone a lot of places since I've been here for seven years, so I hope we can continue to do that.
Connie. Jeanette Gibbons?
Thank you for this chance to address the school board. Happy birthday, Dr. Willard. And, um, as you know, I've come to enjoy this place, speaking to you, having a chance to share information, share my thoughts, perspectives. And I just learned of the situation with Dr. Willard last night in a quick text message that I received from a friend, and we were both kind of shocked and awe, what's going on here? And I do echo Jason's comments about what is going on. I'm afraid chains are being yanked. That shouldn't be yanked, that I'm not sure people are making decisions that they really want to be making. Obviously, Dr. Willard is not wanting to retire. That's pretty clear. And I'm not so sure that you are anxious to usher him out the door either, in the type of relationship and working and accomplishments that have been reached here under his supervision. So, yes, I heard about the accreditation problems, and I'll just give you a little background there, and I may run a minute or two long, I'll try not to. Um, I worked on campus in the university engineering department, and I was part of accreditation, planning, report writing, the review process that went on, and we got dinged. We got dinged, and I know, on the spot, you get a chance to remedy what's wrong. So, I had a phone call with Dr., or with Joe Graves, the head of the South Dakota Department of Education. In fact, I was running a little late getting here, but just had a quick five-minute Reader's Digest version of kind of what went down in the accreditation process here. No sweat. Everybody, take a breath, myself included, myself included, and not just this area, in a lot of areas. Just step back and take a breath and find out what's going on. Get to the facts before we jump off into the deep dive in with the sharks. I got to stay away from that area myself, thank you. So, what he told me were there were nine deficiencies during the evaluation, five of which were remedied on the spot. And I can, I can attest to what that's like when that accreditation team is there breathing down your neck and you're thinking, oh, jeez, what are they going to nitpick us on here? And they do, ding, 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 like any chance they can get. So, you kind of wonder whose team they're on, but, so he told me the four deficiencies that were remaining. School improvement, teacher evaluation, principal evaluation, and employee certification. Now, he didn't have a chance to go into details, but he indicated that those are all things that can be remedied. And, yeah, I heard the story about we might lose our funding. So, you know, of course, a good reporter would not want to miss the chance to sensationalize on a story. So, straight from the, oh, gosh, which one is this, The War Room, whichever publication? State of South Dakota says Brookings School District "on probation," quotes, "for accreditation at risk to lose state aid to education." No. And Dr., yeah, Joe Graves explained to me, every year, three schools fall into this category of "on probation." Here's a chance, here's what you need to do to remedy the situation, we're going to work this out, and it's taken care of. We have never dropped a school and lost their funding. So, talk about fear mongering, and I'm, I've had it, I've had it with fear mongering. You know I've had it, through COVID, through all of it. But I will admit that this whole chance has given me a chance to learn and grow, study, ask questions, research for myself, ask more people, more questions, keep researching, keep changing my thoughts based on what information I have currently at my best disposal. And as that changes, well, I have to reevaluate again, don't I? I will second the motion that you reject his, retire his plan, step down, his resignation. Furthermore, I would tell Dr. Willard, just go snatch those papers back. You do not resign. You will fight this tooth and nail if you need to. It is not this school board that's doing this to you. Who, so who's, who's pulling the chains? I've got the organization chart. Who is pulling the chains at the top of this organization chart? Dr. Willard answers to you, and then above that is this very nefarious district stakeholders. Well, I'm beginning to wonder if the voters are district stakeholders or not. Maybe not. I've seen it in local government, I've seen it at the state level going out to peer, I've seen it at the national level. Nobody's listening to us, the voters. Well, I shouldn't say nobody's listening. They're not acting on the will of the people. There is some much higher power that is coming down on all of us, and it's time we start standing up and pushing back. I'm pushing back every step of the way. I've got children, grandchildren, and I hope future generations beyond that. Three Bobcats, three jackrabbits, my husband and I jackrabbits, he's a Bobcat his entire life here. Some things got to give. No, not give, we need to stand up and push back. Dr. Willard, do not resign. School board, do not take his resignation. Happy birthday, Dr. Willard.
Thank you, Jeanette. Um, I know, uh, we are going to be moving into an executive session. I was just going to address the hot-button topic of accreditation, um, really briefly, but we will, on our next school board meeting, which is next Monday, have an agenda item on this, since it wasn't on the agenda, um, tonight. Uh, and so we will have an agenda item on that. Dr. Willard, did you, Jeanette kind of summed it up really nicely, but would you like to just give a couple brief comments and then know that next meeting we'll be able to dig deeper? But I actually appreciated that. We can just take a breath, and it's okay. Uh, and, and we know that we're going to go ahead and get through these accreditation things. This is nothing happening in our classrooms with our kids. Our teachers are doing an awesome job. Our kids are, are doing great in, in school. This is really just some things that needed to be uploaded to the state website that weren't done in a, on a timely manner and in the, in the exact way. And it wasn't even that, it was just small portions of plans. Uh, and so if you look at that, it really is just a, a something that we'll go ahead and get through. I received a letter, a certified mail letter on, uh, March 10th, and that was my first time knowing about anything going on with our accreditation. And so that's the first time as a board member I, I was aware, and so I went ahead, and, and we should be able to be cleared up by March 31st. So, this is really a kind of a two to three week, uh, process that we should be able to get through. And so, um, like I said, Jeanette summed it up. Dr. Willard, if you wanted to add any, um, just brief comments, because we will be entering executive session, so if we can keep them brief, uh, but we will have a full agenda item on this as well. But as a mom of two girls in the district, this is not something that concerns me. I'm a teacher, a former teacher, been through a lot of accreditations. I led the district through an advanced ed accreditation review when I was there, uh, on the SDSU campus. The college I work for has nine accrediting bodies, and so I, I'm not concerned as a board president about our accreditation. Obviously, we don't want probation listed on the state website, and we will deal with that immediately and, and the right way, and we don't want that there. So, I said I was going to be brief, but I lied, I wasn't actually brief. So, anyway, Dr. Willard, if you want to sum up a couple things, and then we'll, we'll head into executive session, uh, with our legal counsel, who's here?
As was recognized, I do have a document that I'll be happy to share with anybody this evening, so I'll set those aside. It is a public document that talks about the four identified areas, um, that are identified as non-compliance. One is waivers of, for administrative rules of South Dakota. We have some staff members that aren't fully licensed, and we just have to have a process and a tool that acknowledges how we are addressing those things, as well as, because we are a high-achieving school district, we offer classes outside the scope that's identified in the administrative rules, such as algebra in the eighth grade. And believe it or not, we need to have a waiver from the state to offer algebra to eighth graders. So, again, we have a, a template that we'll fill out relative to that. Teacher evaluation actually was addressed through, um, and this finding's been resolved already, and that's through the negotiated agreement. Principal evaluation, it is simply a policy update that needs to be made and reflect the state statutes, and we do have a policy subcommittee that has reviewed, we've already had a first reading of that policy. That policy has been reviewed by, uh, board members Deb DeBates and Teresa Binkley before final consideration on March 27th. And then finally, teacher certification, um, we have seven staff members that were flagged for components of certification, and interestingly enough, the certification system was down and inoperational during the time of our accreditation process. So, even if we had wished to and tried to complete this, we couldn't simply because the system was down. We've had conversations directly with Dr. Graves and his staff, assuring us that we are on the right path to have a plan of action, as well as addressing the concerns, um, shared no later than March 31st, but as I have shared, we're endeavoring to have these things all resolved, um, as early as our March 27th board meeting, if at all possible.
Thank you. Um, that district review, by the way, was conducted on December 6th of 2022, um, and then we, um, uploaded those items, uh, March 6th, and then received the notification on March 10th. And so this is just all recent. So, all right, um, I am looking for a motion, uh, to enter into executive session tonight. This is pursuant to SDCL 1-25-2 subsection 1, personnel, and subsection 3, legal counsel on contractual matters. Oh, sorry. Yep. Looking for a motion to enter into executive session.
I move we enter into executive session. Second.
Moved by Teresa and seconded by Terry. Ryan, we're ready for that vote? Okay, so once we do enter into executive session, uh, we'll be, uh, in here, but we will have two action items following, uh, the executive session along with adjournment. So, thank you for joining us. You have to go now. You can come back, that was my point of your action items. Yep, you're welcome to be here. Yep, you're welcome to be here.
All right, everybody. Thank you. Um, all right, before we move into motion, um, we've asked our attorney Rich to, Rich Halsper, to make some comments regarding a release of all claims and settlement agreement that we have arrived at. And so, uh, we have arrived at. And so, Rich will make those comments now.
Man, my name is Rich Helsper. I've been an attorney for the school board for a number of years, and I've been an attorney throughout this particular matter. This is a process that did not start yesterday or the day before. It has been, um, for a period of time. I, a difficult situation, as everybody understands, and I've asked the, the board members not to comment on this publicly until, uh, we, the board has another meeting at 5:15 on, Monday afternoon, this coming Monday. Uh, the parties have entered into a resignation and settlement agreement, and, I'm sorry, release and settlement agreement, which addresses the resignation here of Dr. Willard. On Monday, that will be made available through the district offices, um, but the board has to approve it first. And part of the approval process is that in the release and settlement agreement, there's an itemized letter from myself, there's two of them, that sets forth the grounds for what has, what has occurred up until this point in time. And so I would ask that everyone be patient until that time. We need, the board needs to legally approve it first. So that's the process. We have to, if they're going to, if the board's going to accept the resignation, they do this. Then Monday at 5:15 in the board meeting, which will be part of the agenda, so public notice will be given. Then the settlement and release agreement, which has been executed by the parties, will be put up for approval to the board. So that's the process that I would suggest to the board that you follow.
All right. Uh, I am looking for a motion of approval to approve the superintendent resignation. Like?
I move to accept the resignation letter from Superintendent of Brookings Schools, Dr. Clint Willard, dated March 20, 2023, with resignation effective on June 2, 2023.
A motion from Wes.
I will second that motion.
Brian, we're ready for that vote. We have three that have voted. Wes and Teresa. Leading on one vote. Okay, thank you. Motion passes. Um, all right, I'm looking for a motion of approval to appoint Superintendent Search Firm. Um, we can make a motion and then go ahead and discuss that, as well as call Search Firm for a presentation. Yeah, it's right here for you.
I motion for approval to appoint a Superintendent Search Firm.
I second that.
Okay, moved by Teresa and seconded by Deb. Um, we're calling Tom Oster, and Tom works with Dakota Education Consulting Firm. And he's gonna go ahead and give us, uh, some information. Hold on. Information on Superintendent Search and current marketplace as well. What? Oh, okay. No, we're not voting yet, because we're in discussion. Yep. Nothing is working in time tonight.
Did you vote?
Yeah. Hi, Tom. It's Kelly Books, uh, with School Board, and you're live at our school board meeting right now. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, thank you. Hey, we've just made a motion of approval to appoint a superintendent firm, so we're just in the discussion component. And I've shared that this is Tom Oster calling from Dakota Education Consulting, and you're gonna share a little bit publicly about your firm and your search process, and how you see it fitting with the Brookings School District right now.
Opportunity, uh, you know, our search services include, obviously, recruiting for the candidates, screening the candidates. We do preliminary phone interviews of all candidates, of all applicants. And then, uh, we collect all the applications online through our system. Uh, we will do the advertising for the district, put it on ASBSD and SASD. It'll be on our website, and then we encourage you to put the link on the district website. And, uh, I don't know if my proposal's been shared.
Yeah, board members have that document.
Okay. And, uh, how about the district profile that we created?
Yep, board members have that. They received that document later this afternoon, today, yes.
Wonderful. So then, the board members can see then what actually goes on the website. Uh, so they, you know, prospective candidates can look at that. They can review the district's strengths of the Brookings School District. Uh, all of the links are on there for your website, for the statistical digest through the Department of Education, to see the financials of the district, et cetera. And then, uh, again, the recruiting process is so key to filling these positions. Uh, it is kind of amazing to me, after doing this for 12 years, that how many folks that actually need a phone call before they, they will apply for the position. And so, we're used to that. Uh, we've got contacts in all the neighboring states that we reach out to and ask for names of people that they recommend that would be good for a school district like Brookings. And, uh, and we concentrate on Iowa, Minnesota, North Dakota, Wyoming, Nebraska, the neighboring states. Uh, that doesn't mean we won't get applications from other states, but, uh, we, we focus on those. And what we find is that when you find somebody really good, that's, you know, say they're in their mid-40s, they've got 20 years in their own state, and they're very hesitant to leave because they all have a retirement system. And now they've got 20 years into that system and going to another state, they've gotta start over. So, it is hard to recruit from out-of-state to get top, top-of-the-line candidates because of that. And then the other factor is, uh, the situation of pay. Now, you know, obviously, Brookings is a very well-paying district for South Dakota, but, you know, for instance, you can go to a district of 1,000 kids in Iowa, and they're already paying that. So, again, that becomes a barrier sometimes to recruit those out-of-state candidates. Having said that, we feel like there are some outstanding folks right in South Dakota that we would recruit for this position. Uh, and then the next step is, uh, once the, the position is closed, uh, we compile all the application materials, the online application where they have to answer a lot of questions about, you know, have you ever been terminated from a job? Uh, you, have you ever committed any offenses, anything like that? They fill all that out, obviously, a letter of application, a resume, reference letters, additional references that, uh, we get email and phone numbers for. All that information then is compiled and put into three-ring binders, which will be sent to the board in advance of what we call the candidate selection meeting. And at that point, we will be the person to go through the applicants in the list, and then the school board would pick who it is that they want to interview from that list. And typically, that's no less than three and no more than four. Uh, and then we work with, typically, we work with the board president and the business manager to, uh, work out where we're gonna do the interviews, pick the room numbers, uh, that you're gonna use, et cetera. The board then decides who they want to include in this process. Do they want certified teachers, classified employees, administrators, parent, community members? That's a board decision. And then we make the schedule work based on that. The only thing that we ask is that you limit the, each committee to no more than 10 to 12 people, because we want them all to be engaged in asking questions. And if you get larger than that, there's just not enough time to, for everyone to ask a question. And we've done, uh, we've been doing these searches for, uh, 12 years, over 160 searches, primarily in South Dakota, uh, districts like size of Brookings. We've done Mitchell, Huron, Spearfish, Douglas, Sturgis, Yankton, and, uh, you know, and the process has worked very, very well. I'll stop there and see if the, any of the board members have any questions.
Thank you, Tom. Questions from board members? Wes, any questions for Tom? Questions? I just want to, um, oh, come on, go ahead.
Tom, I just had a clarification. You said community members could be, or Tom, I mean, I'm sorry. Clarification about the committees that you were talking about. You said 10 to 12 on each committee. How many committees were you referring to there? I guess I missed that.
Well, and again, this is a board decision, and it kind of comes down to how many people you want from each of those classifications. So, let's say that you interview four people. We like to do what we call round robin. And so, let's say you have a committee of administrators, and then a committee that has certified and classified staff in it, a committee that has parenting community members, and then, of course, the board. Well, that's four total committees, counting the board committee, and four candidates then. One would be in each committee simultaneously, and then on the hour, we would rotate those folks.
Thank you.
But if you say, you know, we don't want to include that many people, then we would move it down to three committees, and, and so on and so forth. But we'll make work whatever you folks want to do.
Hey, Tom, will you, um, I have a couple of questions. Will you want to address timeline in your thoughts, and then just maybe give us a, you know, brief overview, um, publicly of what the marketplace is like right now?
Sure. Well, you know, I don't think it's any secret that we are getting on the verge of being late. And, uh, you know, the, the problem is, is that there might be a candidate out there that would be outstanding for this position, but they may get to the point of saying, "Well, I don't want to leave my school that late in the year." Uh, and we don't think that will be the case, but we won't know that till we start to recruit these folks. Uh, but that is a risk, you know, the later we get in the year, that's a risk we run that somebody will say, "Well, gosh, you know, if I leave, then it's another four or five weeks before my board can fill their position." And, uh, the other thing, of course, is, is that people may be under contract with their existing district, and then they have to ask permission to be let out of that contract in order to apply for your position. And those, and we run into that, whether it's January or February, it doesn't matter. Uh, but we do think that there are good folks out there. Now, I will say this. This will be a board decision, once the position closes. If the board doesn't feel like that they have the candidate pool that they want, we can certainly suspend the search and find the district an interim that could serve the next school year, and then we would reopen the position in December. And there's no additional charge for that for the district. That's included in our fee, that if the district needs to go that way, that's your call.
Okay.
Regarding the time and the process that day, whereas I read the material, by the close, close of the day, we will have received input from our, from the, those four groups, three groups, whatever it is. And then, a decision will have been made. How critical is it to have that decision that day?
So, uh, great question. I'm glad you brought that up, because we, we changed the process about eight years ago, because what we were having is, uh, boards would get done with the interview process, and then maybe they wanted to wait a day or two, and then they would finally offer the position. And sometimes their number-one candidate would drop out, because they're like, "Well, if the board couldn't make up their mind, I'm not sure I want to go there." And then, secondly, uh, in offering the position, we used to say, you know, well, the candidate would say, "Well, can I have three or four days to think about this?" And that was kind of the protocol back in the day. And, you know, then what would happen is, they'd think about it for three or four days, and then their existing board would give them a big raise and talk them into staying. And then we would go to the board's number-two choice if they liked them, and of course, the number-two choice would say, "No, I'm pretty, I know I'm second fiddle here. I'm not interested." And so we were losing good candidates because of that. And so, we kind of came to the conclusion that the board would not have any more information two or three days later than they have the day when they're done with the interviews, number one. And number two, we let the candidates know, everybody that's ever gone through our process, they know they're expected to give the board an answer if they're given an offer. And it's worked out really well. Uh, in fact, once they receive an interview, we send a very detailed email to the candidates, reminding them that the board will deliberate following the interviews, and their intention, and we always say intention, is to make an offer. And if you receive an offer, the board expects an answer. And of course, you know, there's always the negotiating of the contract once the offer is made. Uh, but I will tell you this, in 160 of these, we've never lost the board's number-one choice based on salary and benefits. And that's the blessing of putting a salary range out there. Everybody that applies has a pretty good idea of the range you're gonna be in. Does that mean you're stuck with that and, and granite? No. You can, you can adjust that, you know, as needed, but, uh, we just don't lose them now that we've started putting out a salary range like that. So, I would highly encourage you to stick with that protocol so that you don't lose a good candidate. Uh, but again, you know, if I'm fortunate enough to work with you folks, I do exactly that. I work for you. And so if you tell me, "Well, we've got to change that protocol," I'll do it. But I just want you to know that we've done it this way for about eight years, and it works really well. And we've done it in large districts just like yours.
Um, Tom, if we decide to move forward, uh, this evening, can you talk a little bit about what you would recommend for a posting, timeline, deadlines, you know, all that kind of situation?
Sure. So, I have the profile prepared, and you've seen it. Uh, you might not have seen the last iteration. You might not have seen the last iteration of it. I added some more pictures that were sent to me. And so the profile is ready to go. And if the board gave me the go-ahead, I would post this tomorrow morning. And it would be advertised on ASBSD. And sometimes boards don't know this, but anybody that's looking for a job, if they've registered with associated school boards, the minute that job is posted tomorrow morning, they are all pinged with an email. And so they know that that job is open. Now, if they're not currently looking for a job, that's where the phone calls from us come into play. And so we would post it tomorrow morning. And then again, if you refer to your profile, if you have those in front of you, and I'm pulling the mine up myself. I've tried to shorten this timeline up as much as I think we possibly can. Again, in order to avert that situation of candidates thinking it's too late. And so the deadline that I'm recommending would be April 16. And then you'll notice that there's some time in between the 16th and the 24th of the candidate selection. We will invariably receive applications in the last day. And in order for us to do the preliminary phone interview, check references, all of that, we've just got to have a certain amount of time. And then we also have to print all these documents and then ship those three-ring binders to you folks. And I can do one of two things on that. I can ship them directly to Board President Books or I can ship them to the business manager, whatever the board wants. And then they get those three-ring binders out to the folks. And then we put a reminder right in that three-ring binder that this information is highly confidential and shouldn't be shared with anyone. One of the reasons that we're able to get applicants is that we promise them that their information is confidential and will not be shared with anybody until or unless they receive an interview. And we, when the board selects their candidates, we advise the board not to release those names to the public. Now, obviously, if you have committees involved in the interview process, on the day of the interviews, then the cat's out of the bag. People know who interviewed. And that's fine. But we don't release it in advance of that. We learned a lesson when we did the Marshall, Minnesota, search that the candidates' names were released and somebody Googled them, like everybody does. And they Googled, it was a very common name and they Googled them and they found the wrong person. And they spread it all over Marshall, Minnesota, you know, that there were pictures of drinking and what have you. And it was not even the right person. And it worked out and nobody got sued. But I will tell you that if that candidate would have known that, they could have really been upset because, believe it or not, even though everybody realized in the interview that it was the wrong person, I think people's subconscious were like, "Yeah, we're not going there." So, and then the interviews would be on the 29th. And I'm sure you've noticed that's a Saturday. We didn't used to do this, but we found that doing Saturdays works really well because we have a building to ourselves, we have classrooms that we need. Obviously, we're going to need four classrooms for the interviews if you have four committees. We need rooms for the candidates, kind of what we call their homeroom. And then DEC will need a room as well because we've got to compile all the report cards. And by the way, that reminds me, I didn't mention that. But these committees, we have what we call report cards because we're old educators. They're basically a feedback form and they'll fill one out on each candidate. And then we compile that data for the board and it'll be in a one-page document that the board can look at at the end of the evening. We tell the committee members, "You will not vote on the candidates. You will not rank the candidates. You're just going to give a feedback form on each one." Because state law is very clear, only the board can hire and only the board can fire. It doesn't prohibit you from taking feedback, but you have to make the decision. And it's dangerous if you ask the committees, "Well, why don't you folks vote 1, 2, 3, 4, tell us what you think?" Well, the board has more information than the committees do, obviously, because it's confidential information. And what you don't want is to have one committee pick candidate A and the next committee picks candidate B and the next one picks candidate C. And then no matter what you do, you've got certain folks that are mad. Where if they just fill out a feedback form and we tell them they need to do that confidentially and not talk to each other before they fill out the form because we don't want the most dominant personality in the room dictating how the forms are filled out, it works out really, really well. Almost without exception, the board selects the exact same person who scored the highest or the second-highest in the group.
Tom, are you here on that day to help direct things? Or someone from your organization is here to help direct that day? It sounds like there's a lot of intricacies that go on.
Absolutely. We will, there will be three of us from Dakota Ed Consulting that will be there that day. And potentially four, depending on how many you interview. But we will move the candidates from Room A to Room B. We'll provide all the interview packets for everybody. Basically, all the board and the committee members need to do is show up. And we'll take care of everything else. There'll be questions in there and the questions are geared for each different group. So there's administrator questions, there are school board questions, there's faculty-staff questions, and then there are parent-community questions. Now, some of the questions are similar, but they're geared towards those groups. And then the day of, you'll notice on the schedule, I'm not sure if you received the sample schedule for the day.
A while back, we did.
If you did, you'll notice on there that we have 45 minutes scheduled in the very beginning of the day. And the board would go into executive session at 9:00 a.m. And all the committee members would be in that executive session. And at that point, we'll hand out all the interview packets. They'll get a copy of the schedule, they'll get their list of questions, they'll get an orientation meeting, one-page document. They'll get a list of inadvisable and illegal questions that cannot be asked. And of course, if they stick to the script of the questions we provide, those are all legal questions. But we do say this, at the end of the process, we tell them, "Listen, if you have a burning question that is pertinent to Brookings that we don't have on our list, we would ask that you vet that question through us to make sure we can confirm that it's legal." Then they can add that question to the list. And what we find is typically there'll be one or two additional questions, but otherwise they pick them right off the suggestions. And we provide those for the school board as well.
Any additional questions for Tom? Brian, from financial perspective, additional questions on that part? All right. Tom, I think we'll let you go unless anyone has more questions for Tom.
I was just going to say thank you, Tom, for putting that all together.
Thank you, Tom. Safe travels.
Absolutely. Thank you, folks.
Okay, bye-bye. All right. Additional thoughts, discussion by the board? I guess timeliness is on my mind, obviously all of, probably all of our minds. And so I feel like moving forward with an appointment is something I'm comfortable with, but I don't know how other board members are feeling about that.
And maybe you want to explain a little bit about why Tom and his firm, and his organization, just for anybody that's wondering why we're not vetting more?
Yeah, I guess when I received information from their consultant firm, just their connections in South Dakota, the number of searches they've done, the size that they've done, just seems like a good fit for us. I think they're kind of the only game in South Dakota, the best game in, seems like, in South Dakota. I haven't been through this before, obviously. But just the ability to have contacts that will apply for this position and be able to use it in a timely manner. But I don't know if others have experiences or thoughts on that as well. I think we probably need a friendly amendment to the motions and I can't remember who made them, just to include Dakota Education Consulting in that.
Teresa?
Okay.
I will friendly amend to make it Dakota Education Consulting in the motion.
No questions on that? For some reason, I'm no longer in the meeting. I think, Brian, we're ready for that then. I know, it times us out. It's a very angry system tonight. Everybody's trying to sink.
I've been sinking and sinking.
Log back out and log back in, Jason says. Log out, log in. I think a voice vote would be faster. Okay. Yeah, you got to keep, you can't let it get stagnant. All right, motion passes to approve, or to appoint, excuse me, Dakota Education Consulting to begin our search firm, to be our search firm. All right, I'm looking for a motion of adjournment.
Move to adjourn?
Moved by Terry, seconded by Wes for adjournment. Brian, we're ready for that vote. Can't get anything right. All right, just Terry. Motion passes, I think. Thank you, everyone.